Ready? We'll go ahead and get started. Roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Present.
Counsel Gerson. Counsel Trask. Counsel Gorley. Counsel Coleman.
Present.
Counsel Sanchez.
Here.
Counsel Richards.
Present.
Let the record show we have six present with one non-present. Lisa was tied up with work today in Portland and she wasn't sure if she's going to be making it back. That said, we'll move on to our work session of debt and capital project discussion.
Good evening. Thank you for making time for us today. So we've been wrestling around a little bit here and kind of in a holding pattern with capital projects and how to tackle those and how to fund them, where to fund them from. Thrown into that mix, we would include ARPA money, which we now know we're going to be getting a hold of, as well as the possibility of a lid, which would require some additional debt. So what we've tried to do and what I'm going to turn this over to Brandon and let Brandon lead you through. He has created the spreadsheet of all spreadsheets and with multiple pages and tabs and so we're going to let him talk you through this. There's a couple of assumptions that we need to make in order to to get an idea, such as interest rate term, those kinds of things. But Brandon is going to walk you through all of that. And essentially what he's done is he's going to show us if this is a project that you want to tackle by simply putting a Y in the box. It's going to show what that would do to the rates if they're applicable or what that might do to a payment. And you'll be able to get a really good picture and a really, really good idea of what to expect. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Brandon.
Okay, I'm gonna walk through what you see on the screen in front of you. This this screen is also streaming online for those that are participating remotely. What we've done is gone through and tried to account for as many things as humanly possible. So I'm just going to roll down this list, tell you what's included in them before we even get started on putting values into the system. And then we'll start tackling kind of the project list, going through that and letting you all decide kind of which direction you'd like us to go or I guess have a bigger conversation on projects and debt overall. So what you see on the screen in front of you is a list of the various divisions basically within Public Works because they are the largest body that is has capital projects part or Police Department and Community Economic Development have some projects more so equipment than they are projects. I did not include those in this discussion. Some of it is standard replacement of, for example, police vehicles. Every year we try to replace one. We don't want to replace them all at once. Otherwise, we're left with all of them going bad likely around the same time or all of them hitting the same mileage around the same time. So we do want to maintain some kind of kind of normal replacement cycle so we don't jam them all together. On the water side, so what we've done is for all of these, we have a five-year scenario in front of you. In our five-year projections based on costs and operating, we have a an estimated increase that would be necessary to maintain what we'll call current service level. That increase in rates would need to be 2.54% in each of the next five years in order to maintain what we're doing today. Certainly, it could be less. It could be none. That obviously is at the discretion of the Budget Committee and and this council. But then it comes down to what aren't you covering? What kind of what operations are we scaling back on? What replacements aren't we doing? That that's a grander discussion. So this this is purely hypothetical for planning purposes only, not guaranteeing an increase in rates. What we've done is gone through and plugged in for you. There's 100 to 300 cubic feet users. So if you'll remember, 300 cubic feet is included in our base rate for water. So that 2.54% in the first year would mean an additional 51 cents to those users. Four hundred and of our residential customers, 43.7% of those consumers fall into that category. Excuse me, 400 cubic feet, we're looking at about 15% of our residential customers would see a 74 cent increase with a two and a half percent rate adjustment. 500 cubic feet would see 98 cents and our average citywide 600 cubic feet would see a dollar 21 per month increase with a 2.54% rate increase. The 100 to 600 cubic foot range covers 80.3% of our residential customers. In the outlying years, the costs are about the same as far as the increases, just a slight slightly more because as you add, then the percentages you get increasing values. So on the storm side, oh, also built into this assumption is an LID. So this does not indicate that you as a council have approved the LID. Again, this is planning purposes. We've included it in here. We could certainly strip it out. But this assumes that the city would be covering every year 20% of the annual payment to to furnish the Willow and Yucca Street LID. Right now, that LID debt length is scheduled at 20 years and we'll kind of dig into why that is when we get further into this conversation. On the stormwater side, it's already sitting at a dollar because of the Willow-Yucca LID. If we assume any of the costs, the if you'll remember, the the Stormwater Fund does not have much flexibility. And so any kind of increase in general at all is going to require a dollar increase. So for the utility bill, this is the overall utility bill increase that we'll see if you were to change either the storm and water.
Excuse me, Brandon. Are you saying that the stormwater would be a dollar increase each year for five years?
It would just be a one-time $1. So next year, next fiscal year, if we were to take on the LID, we'd need $1 and that would cover the payments for the next several years.
Thank you.
This projection assumes five years because that's that's what we've been able to compile at the moment. So all of this assumes a five-year projection. Certainly, once we get outside of that into probably closer to 10, we would maybe need another dollar as stormwater costs, personnel, materials, all that jazz starts to increase. But right now, we're just looking at five years.
Brandon, are you are is this first year one? Is that you thinking that's next year?
Yes, 2023. On the street side, the only thing in here so far is the again, the LID. So the annual payment for that LID that the city would be responsible for out of its operating is about $8,200 a year. That assumes that 80% of the LID properties are paying their allotments each month, semi-annual, whatever we set up for them. As we go through this, you'll have a total of 157,000 and change to allocate for debt payments on the street side. Once we get above that, then you'd have to determine, okay, what's the conversation then? Is there a potential for a street fee? Is there cost reductions on the operating side? Or did we put too many projects in? Parks, there is nothing in here for parks right now. So as we'll go through, the the value will change. The source of parks projects is the General Fund. The General Fund, as you are aware, is maxed at this point. We're we're treading water, so to speak, as far as what we can put into that fund, at least in maintaining a six-month fund balance in each year. So with that said, any parks projects then would need to be coupled with and and associated debt would need to be coupled with a conversation on what operating items in the General Fund, aren't we going to continue? Or where can we make? Where can we consolidate for efficiencies? The last part of this conversation is going to be the ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act. The city's current estimated allocation is $2,214,795 rounded. So we will play with that as we go through this. As we allocate it out, it will show up in this spent column and you'll see how much is remaining. Yes? Oh, do I need to scroll down for you? Did I did I get it? I can't see. All right. Any questions on that kind of brief summary? Okay, for your viewing pleasure, Public Works, specifically Trish, thank you, Trish, put together a Google Earth layout of all of the projects that we have on these lists and kind of their their location so that we can kind of look into that. Ray has the control for that. So if you want to zoom in on a specific section, you get to to point at Ray. All right. If there are no further questions. All right. In the packet for this work session was a printed list of our one-year CIP. So all of those projects that we are planning to complete in this current fiscal year, followed by a multi-year plan. I will go briefly through those projects. If you have questions about specific ones, there are folks in the room. Will you open that? There are folks in the room who can better answer questions than I on those specific projects. So I'll start at the top. We've we have the street section up top. For your information on the screen, this first column is the FY22 capital costs. Those are already allocated in this current year budget. If we take on any debt, we likely won't cover those unless you want to save existing fund balances for the future years. So they are not planned on, you know, if we mark them with a yes, it's not going to do anything in the spreadsheet, but I wanted to list them here so that you had them. The second section, the future years' capital costs, that's what we'll be basically assigning values to as we go. Some of them have, so example, the street overlay SEAL maintenance program. It was originally for this year planned at 600,000. The total project need is a million. And so an additional 400,000 will get assigned. As we go down through this list, all of these park projects don't currently have a current year cost associated. I did not include anything for sewer and the reason for that is most of our sewer stuff at this point is planned out. There is one thing on here, this sewer system rehabilitation program. That's primarily for ongoing annual maintenance. Again, much like the police vehicles, not something we want to just tackle all at once because then we have higher costs in the future trying to tackle all of the problems at once. So we we need to leave that to spread that out. The rest of the wastewater treatment stuff is the plant. And so we already have funding plans for those. We're well into that project. So I did not include those into this discussion really, but I did put them on here for you to see at least. On the stormwater side, same thing. These two projects are planned in this fiscal year, so there are no future capital dollars assigned. And then the water stuff. So does anybody need to go through any of these projects specifically before we kind of get started? Okay, what I'm going to do, this is kind of a council discussion. Really, I'm just here to play on the whiteboard, so to speak. As you go through and have discussions and decide, you know, these are projects that we really need to tackle right now. What is it going to do? What does it look like to our overall balances? What is it going to do to our rates? I will come through and a Y. When I put in a Y, that assumes, yes, that would be a debt-funded item. You will see the rates on the screen in front of you change in order to accommodate that project. Now, again, this assumes rate increases only, no operational reductions. So certainly, operational reductions are on the table, but it hasn't been figured into this spreadsheet because that's that's a tall order. So this by no means indicates that rates are a foregone conclusion, but it is part of the talking point, I think, as far as what are we going to do to handle this payment. Okay? There are other tabs in this that we will go into if we need them, specifically kind of some of those payment tabs. How much? How much debt are we incurring? What's our monthly pay or our semi-annual payment? The spreadsheet's designed to do twice-a-year payments. That's fairly typical for for our organization and for other municipalities. So I left it as such. All of that is feeding into the table in front of you and we can also change the debt length right now planned at 30 years. So just know that going forward in this discussion that if we assign any debt, the plan is a 30-year repayment schedule. So we'll be doing this for 30 years. We can certainly shorten it. Elongating it is hard. There aren't many many payment or loan providers that will give us more than 30. USDA is probably about the only one, but you get a lot of paperwork and process headaches when it comes to USDA, just because they have environmental requirements, mandatory reviews, all sorts of stuff. So we we take that very lightly.
Can I ask a question? When you gave us that proposal a few meetings ago about the savings of the 1.8 or whatever million dollars, what was that based upon for that? Was it 30 years too or 20 years or?
I think at the time that was based on 20. The rate assumptions in this have changed slightly and and a lot of this I'm trying to give you, I guess, what I'll call worst-case scenarios. It could be better for us. So right now, what I'm assuming is that park projects and street projects, we would consider full faith and credit bonds. We could sell full faith and credit bonds, which means they're backed by every dollar that the city has that's legally available or unencumbered monies. That interest rate is going to be lower and right now that interest rate looks at about 1.95% today. The bonds that we would potentially sell to do water projects or stormwater projects, those are based on revenue bonds. Those are a revenue bonds are not as secure in the eyes of lenders, although because if the revenue stream dries up, we, the city, are not required to make the payment in that moment. And so that's that's a risk for them. Certainly, we don't anticipate that. But if the revenue does exist, that has to go first towards the debt. So keeping that in mind. But that rate I have set at 2.95% because those are not as secure in lenders' eyes.
Can I ask one more question? Are you if you're projecting, are you projecting the population growth and the amount of revenue that we would receive from that too in any of this?
Revenue growth stand, yes. Typical increases based on historical evaluations. Any other questions? All right, projects. I would take recommendations on where folks want to start or if anybody wants to kick off that this conversation.
I'm still scratching my head on that emergency generator project of 1 million. That seemed pretty dang high.
Given you what your estimates are, it might be high. I I'm not going to argue or disagree with you. Yeah.
How much I don't know.
Greg, microphone.
It is high. I've been told everywhere from three-quarters of a million to million point two. So we threw the million-dollar number out. Now that's full automation. That's automatic turn-on, automatic turn-off, cooldowns, through your SCADA, all automated controls.
Can I ask a question, Greg? Will that reduce workforce? If you get that generator, that would need to take care of some of those things and like see a reduction in overhead payroll and whatnot?
No. What that does is allows us to make water when there is no power in the community. So if there was a fire and there was service interrupted like we saw in Detroit, we would literally have three days max of water. So what that does is to be independent and still push water out into our system. But once we lose power right now, we are pretty much that plant's not running.
Greg, I'm sorry, Ms. Ray. I'm kind of curious. Do other cities around us also have generators like that that do the same purpose?
Absolutely. Most of your significant infrastructure, water, wastewater plants, water pump stations, significant wells, things like that that produce water. Where I come from, we had over 53 emergency generators. So this is not uncommon at all.
I'm I I probably believe we need a generator. There's no question about that. I mean, I'm just questioning the price. I think the price is way too high. That's where I'm coming from.
Well, you got to remember too, this is all automatic and 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 right now it is a high number. We haven't dove down into the weeds on this project. You know, I'd like to tell you it's half a million and and be strong with it, but this is just an estimate at this time.
The other thing to consider on that project is there's there this the current plant was not designed with a generator in mind. It's not so like this building, City Hall, was designed so that a generator could be hooked in fairly easily. It's sitting right outside. And so our primary costs are going to be the generator and the hookup. At the at the water treatment plant, that's not the case. There's a whole lot of work and and hookups that would need to occur throughout the building and the outside of the building in order to get that generator to work. So it's not just a buy a generator, put it down.
Yeah, it is definitely not a just something you go down and plug in. It is a large generator with a lot of controls. And that's typical for these type of plants. Now, we could go out and find a generator somewhere on a mobile unit and we can plug it in, but what's going to happen is you're going to have to have staff come out and do that. Then you're going to have to monitor it during those periods of time. So I mean, that's just kind of typical. I we get to this point, we can look at that price, but that is that's kind of a high price. I I agree.
And this is for emergency preparedness, right?
Yeah, for the community, not just for fire, but you know, and we also have a valve station that's independent of the water plant. We also have a a compressor station that I believe would have to have power as well. And those would be smaller generators. So the whole package of everything and how it's going to work, that's kind of what it's for, but it's it's to still be able to push water into our community while events are happening. And we all know we have issues with that as it is. So I would think if we have a fire and we have people evacuating, we run out of water, there's not really much left.
Well, Mr. I I agree. I I've always thought it was a little bit high. But I agree, we do need one. But is there is there any money that we can get from the governments to help us with that and and maybe cut that cost down to a certain degree?
Yeah, absolutely. So I went through an exercise with a third-party engineering firm that works with PAC Power recently, and we went through an audit of the water plant and all buildings. Trish was involved with that and Stephen as well. In that audit, they came back with certain, I guess, solar panels, battery storage, also generated. They were recommending all those things to be self-sustainable for a two-week period. That was the recommendation. With that, there was a cost, but they also have laid a path for us to then go to FEMA and get money, to go to other agencies and try to find like go to the state of Oregon and try to find certain money for design. There's just these little pockets where they suggest we go. But that's to make this resilient program of putting in solar and we only have so much acreage out there. And so we haven't dove into that right now because we've been busy, but we've had that done. It was probably completed about three, three and a half months ago. And that's kind of where we're sitting. But they recommend as as well, a lot of different types of mechanical devices out. That's not going to come cheaply. So we're probably not that far off. That's my point.
Any other questions, Counselor?
Would anybody like me to start putting Ys in the table? Anybody want me to start in a particular place? So let's say for argument's sake, that the council think that all of the waste or all of the water treatment plant items are essential items that you want to have completed right away. Total cost on those items is 1.3 million in debt that would be necessary. The rate structure on the screen in front of you likely changed. I can't see it, but I know it did change. At this point, for that, what would be necessary is a payment of 30, about 34,000 per payment and we make two payments a year. So you're looking at 68,000. $68,000 a year in order to fund right now, today, those water projects or those water treatment plant items. Your your cost of potential rate increases then went up. So we were at 2.54%. Now we're at 2.7% in the first year and 3.28% in the outlying years. Conversations.
Do any of those items make the pressure better?
So the the finished water in the backwash pumping project that's already being worked on this year, that will make the pressure better. I don't know that any of these items would help in pressure items down the road. The SCADA automation apparently would. So $195,000 in that list.
Will make the quality better? For now.
We have a lot of old pipes and avenues and that's where our poor quality is or our lower quality, a little bit of turbid water from our distribution system. And so that's the small diameter pipes that we have been discussing for, you know, a few months now.
Yeah.
We get those out. It makes great improvements. We can do better flushing. There's better flow to the homes and the condition of the pipes aren't great.
So that small diameter is on this list. That's the 800,000. So we are spending 200,000 in this year. That's the 800,000 in the outlying years. If you mark that as debt-funded, now you're up to 2.1 million and change.
Are we still looking into taking out a loan to fix the water system?
So that's part of this conversation is, does the council want to entertain taking on a loan in order to do these projects within the next 24 to 36 months really? Or do we want to try to stretch this out over the next five or six years? These projects that are on this list, we believe we have funding in our existing rate structures and our existing financial plans to cover over the next five years. This would just speed it up if you were to take debt on. So that's part of this conversation is, do you want to do that? And what does it mean for rates in the future?
Kind of a side note, but I feel like people would be okay with paying a higher rate if they had something they could say that they are paying a higher rate for. Like if we did take out a loan to fix the water system and get new pipes and everything, I think people would be a lot more motivated to pay a higher rate at that point compared to right now, they're paying, they might pay a higher rate and not see any result from that.
We would also have to fix our We would also have to fix our streets after we repair our water lines and those avenues. So you would actually could get both from that.
So if that, with that mentality, say you wanted to do the water lines and then you wanted to also make sure that you included the street overlay and chip seal maintenance program. So we'll add that million dollars into the debt-funded items. You'll see what that did to your table as far as, you know, you're looking at a streets payment for the next thirty years of fifty-two thousand, about fifty-two-five. I, I do want to preface that in this street money, so this one hundred fifty-seven thousand in our financial plan is how much we have allocated to capital right now. So we'd essentially re-appropriate it to debt payments. That's the low end of what we have available, and that hits out in twenty-twenty-five. However, asterisk, as there always is, it gradually declines through twenty-twenty-five to that number, which presumably means that we can assume that going out into future years, ten years out, that will get even worse. Without some kind of intervention from the state, without some kind of operational reductions in costs, without some kind of street maintenance fee, without something to, to offset those costs.
And can I ask one more, Brandon? So this is, um, the money that we were allocated from the governor and the budget. This is secure, so we can go forward with trying to see if we want another loan for something else.
The seven million for the, yes. So I don't, I haven't gotten anything that says she signed it. Did she sign it yet?
I heard she's going to.
Okay. So presuming she signs it, then yes, we could, if, if you as a council wanted to, could, could move forward with, with some kind of debt option to accomplish projects quicker. So under these provisions, so far, we're sitting at about three point one million in potential debt. Three point one. So there's two million here on the water side and a million on the street side. On the water side, you're looking at annual payments of just north of a hundred thousand. On the street side, you're looking at annual payments of about forty-four thousand a year on a million dollars for thirty years. Yes, that's true. Yeah, total interest. So what would you like me to throw in there? So here's your rate increases on the water side. So five, you would need five point nine percent in the first year, three percent in the outlying years. Your debt payment on the street side increases to sixty-eight thousand in annual payments, up from forty-four, I believe it was. It takes, on the water side, that million-dollar interest cost down to seven hundred thousand. So saves you about three hundred grand in the life, in the, in that ten years, basically.
I'm kind of curious. How much has interest rates gone up since March?
Right now, on a double A rated bond, we're looking at one point seven zero percent. I believe when we spoke back then, it was in the probably one point zero five range.
It was. Thank you.
This is your work session. I'm just the.
So if there's money available for the generator from outside sources, is that something that we have to match or have money back? Money to back that?
So it, it depends on that funding source. So some of them would require a match potentially. There may be a vendor out there that, that would have a map, had one avenue we thought was potentially work, but I think it, it turned out to be different than we'd anticipated, where they kind of do the legwork and, and get us a plan. And then say, okay, now you have to go out and find your funding sources. So the options, I think, are, are either way.
It's all in how we present it, too.
Right. I think it depends on urgency, too. If you want something faster, throwing in a match is going to get you money quicker. Trying to get a hundred percent of the funding may take a little bit longer to find that right.
So then could we reduce it in half and just have half of it set aside?
Yep. I can find my mouse. So it does reduce your, your, at least initial year a little bit.
Would the council maybe like staff to kind of run down the list real quick to kind of, I mean, we see these, you know, Canyon Creek pump station. We know exactly what that is. I'm going to guess most of you vaguely recall, but don't know, remember maybe exactly what the project might be. Would you like us to kind of go through and give you a quick rundown of what each of the projects are, just to refresh your memory real quick?
Yes.
Okay. Greg, can you just kind of go down that list real quick and?
Or both or however?
Yeah.
I'm sure we can probably get Trish up here, too. I know she's been living these for quite some time. You know, you can hop over here on Robert's mic, too. Now Canyon Creek Pump Station is for the development that I, oh, transparency that I live in. This has been on the city's project list for quite some time, long before I was here and, uh, long before I moved into that area. But that, that at the top of Ten Street, where you have all that new subdivision, it's such a steep incline that it actually has matched the elevation of the reservoirs that are there. And we're literally at times have, I'm, I'm saying twenty PSI. I'm saying that because anything below twenty PSI is, is issues. It works. It, it runs. We're hoping there's some new plumbing that we're running through that property. And I'm going to make a new connection, but we know as those three new homes come on, there's, I think, four or five other lots that are ready to be built. And then there's a whole road of extension of tent that's can run up and even have further development. And so that pump station is there to support that, to increase pressures. Now, the instruction from our engineer record was that we don't do anything with that pump station until we get the master plan done, just like everything else. We really want to make sure that it's, it's exactly what we need and how we want it. So that's what that project's all about.
So I'm going to run through the description. These are in your packet. They're kind of one little, little one-sentence blurbs about each of the projects. And then if you have additional questions, Greg and, and Trish can certainly answer them. The small diameter water main replacement, that's, it is, that is what it is. There's a significant amount of two-inch water distribution mains in the system that we want to replace. In addition to some smaller diameter, we want a right size. So that's the million dollars for that. Easy valve installation. Install hot tap style easy valves to improve isolation on existing city water mains to provide improved ability to shut down sections of mains during emergency repairs. We talked about the Canyon Creek Pump Station. The water master plan update that's occurring in this fiscal year. So I don't really need to cover that one, but we'll skip the police requests, water treatment requests, the finished water and backwash pumping projects are happening in this fiscal year. The SCADA automation upgrades would update, update the SCADA system, stabilizing and improving functionality of the water treatment process. This new SCADA will integrate with the new wastewater treatment plant SCADA system for better cohesiveness and collaborative approach. Fluoride system replacement, I think that's happening this fiscal year. Emergency generator project, we've talked about that already. The streaming current monitors to replace current monitors that are at the end of expected service life. Is this this year? Turbometer? Next year. Uh, replace turbometer meters and controllers that are at end of life. These are required by OHA. That's a fifty thousand dollar project. Raw water control valve replacement, it would place a raw water control valve that has failed, replace. That's a hundred thousand. The vacuum sludge recirculation, a process involved in the treatment of the city's water that has not worked as intended when the plant was built for some time, increasing other material costs. The estimated cost of that is three hundred thousand. Right now, we have a hundred thousand in this budget, planning a hundred thousand each year until all three trains are replaced. But certainly we could speed that up if we, if we took on additional debt. I'm going to skip the sewage treatment requests, uh, because we all know what's happening there. On the street side, the Highway twenty stip project that's moving forward in this, in this current year budget, we expect that to be done. And then the street overlay chip seal maintenance program, that's the million dollars that we've talked about. You've heard it in front of council a couple of times recently with some projects occurring. That project is budgeted at a million over the next five years. Parks requests, strawberry park improvements, design and construct sidewalk from Westwood Lane, and improve playground space drainage system and remove the chain link path section. Design and construct parking lot, loop trail, improve irrigation system, add garden space, trails and creek maintenance, probably is what it says. Upper Sankey Park improvements, the city recently conducted a kind of a listening session and an idea session with the committee, the community. But this would include improvements to BMX facility, trails, parking lot, restrooms and pedestrian bridge. North Side Park improvements, design and construct playground and river access trail, install ramp stairs, railing, signage, tables, benches, pet stations, trash cans, barbecue, gardens, trees and creek plants. The estimation currently is designed in the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year and constructed in twenty-five, twenty-six. Hobart Wildlife Habitat improvements, design and construct approach roadway from Thirty-Fifth Avenue, add gardens, trees and creek plants. Ashbrook Park improvements, design and construct new restroom, curb and sidewalk on Juniper Street frontage and pave the parking lot. Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in park projects. This here listed as Pub Works request is really for stormwater. The stormwater master plan is, is happening this fiscal year, as is this stormwater upgrades around Eighteenth Avenue, north of Tamarack. But what's left on that list is Thirty-Eighth Avenue, Thirty-Eighth Avenue and Long Street drainage improvements. Increasing capacity on undersized culverts on Long from Thirty-seventh to Thirty-eighth and improve grade for efficient stormwater conveyance. Cotton Creek drainage improvements, design, acquire environmental permits and acquire easements and maintenance agreements for Cotton Creek drainage work to relieve a bottleneck in the drainage system from Ninth Avenue to Poplar Street. Uh, and then subsequently in another fiscal year, the construction of that. We have a hundred thousand for planning and three hundred thousand for construction. Catch basin installation, installing catch basins with associated pipe at Twelfth Avenue, Elman, Larch Street. And that's the list.
Any questions with council? So I think it comes down to basically the council's discussion or consensus of whether we want to take on more debt, or do we want to hold the course to stay with the existing budget we have within. So that's something the council needs to, you know, have a discussion about. There's some, for me, there's a few, still some concerns about taking on more debt because there's certain, a couple of things that have not been solidified. You know, one is our governor giving us the seven million. Yeah, she says she's going to do that, but for me, I don't trust our governor, so I kind of hold back on my faith until we see it in our hand. Second part of this is, which I don't know, the council has been totally, fully brought to speed, but we're having problem with our wastewater engineering firm. And that's kind of a concern because we don't know what's going to happen with that. That could end up snowballing in, in many different ways. So something to keep in the back of our minds as we move forward. But I think with the city's views, we, as a council, we have to come up with, you know, consensus that we want to take on more debt. If so, kind of let them focus that direction or stay the course with our existing budget we have. So at that time, I need kind of a discussion of councils, which direction we think we want to go.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just think that this is contingent on those other things. I don't think that anybody would want to assume more debt if we also had to pay for those additional things at the same time. So in my mind, this is if those other things are taken care of first.
I agree with Counselor Sanchez.
I'd like to hold the course, too, and find out what happens with wastewater.
So I think we will hold the course with the projects so we get within our budget.
So the, the other piece of this is, um, the ARPA funds. We have a very good idea of what we're getting. Staff's looking for some direction on how you want those applied as well. But we can, we have another work session scheduled for this in two weeks. The idea for tonight was to kind of review the products, show you the process. Let you marinate on the projects or not. Maybe you could tell us where you wanted to go tonight as far as projects, but do you have thoughts on the ARPA funding, on how you would like to see some of that?
Well, I think, I think we have to, as a council, really put some thought to that because as we all say all the time, is put, get the most impact for the most people for the most. So we really want to make sure that every dime we spend from that, those funds is, gives the most impact for our citizens, our community. So I think that work session is going to be good, but I don't think we have an idea right now. As the council has some ideas, but I think we need to kind of think about it right now. I don't know if that's the answer you're looking for, but.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Ray, do you have a ETA on when those signatures are supposed to be dried?
We, we don't. Uh, we don't have a solid idea yet. For whatever reason, Oregon's lagging behind in their requests. What we understand is that the state was going to make that request after July as we entered into the new fiscal year for those funds. I heard through the grapevine, it won't be until the end of this calendar year. But nothing solid yet.
So if I could change that just as mentioned, DAS is, the Department of Administrative Services is, is supposed to begin accepting requests for that funding the week of July nineteenth. They'll start to distribute emails and notifications to cities. The actual dollars may or may not be allocated before the end of July. But if it's delayed, they can only get an extension through August until, somewhere in the middle of August. So we, we anticipate that we'll begin, we'll be able to start requesting at least the first half in the next probably four to six weeks.
And my second part was, I meant for the governor's signature on the budget item and then the planning for the wastewater treatment engineer issue.
I don't have a timeline on the governor's signature. I'm a bit surprised it hasn't been signed already. I'm a bit surprised it hasn't been signed already.
It's regard regards to the engineering situation.
Not have that.
Yeah, I'm going there.
Yeah.
Okay. For the council, I just briefly brought that up for back of the mind. Okay. And stop right there because what we need to do is we need to have an executive session regarding this matter. Okay, so we're done with this conversation about the engineering. I brought that up just for keeping the back of mind. We have some unknowns to think about before we just go spend the money. So that's why I brought that up, but we do need to stop right there. So executive session coming up. Okay. Second part, I mean, I'm only one of seven votes, but in my opinion, just like we're talking about the way our wastewater and our and our water lines, to me for the ARPA funds is something I think that I personally would like to see some of that funds go in towards, but that's up to the rest of this council to kind of put some thought to that too. Just like Counselor Richards talked about, you know, the water quality, you know, on the other end is is really poor, but on on the front end of it, I do know from our water treatment plant, we have high quality, even award winning quality water coming out of there. But when you have water lines like we have, they're so old and so decrepit, yeah, quality on their end is crappy. So I think the water lines should be of a discussion and and we also need to look at our wastewater. But again, I'm just speaking of one of seven votes here of discussions. So but I think we need to have that work session. In my opinion, it's going to be important to discuss this ARPA at that time. So.
Get that off to the next time.
Any thoughts of counselors regarding that?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would agree. For me, the water treatment and the wastewater plant, top priority. I mean, every the greatest good for the most people for the longest period of time is water and water is going to be a huge issue as we go down the line here. If things don't get better, we're going to be in a drought and we're going to need all the support we can get.
I see that. Plus, I still see some issues with our wastewater come up too. So that's kind of why I brought up the topic.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I completely agree with Counselor Gerson. I do feel like infrastructure should be the number one. And within infrastructure, I think that the water facility and the wastewater should come first above everything else. So if we keep kicking that can down the road, it's not going to be the best.
Yeah. Anything else from counselors regarding? Give you a sense of direction there, Ray, regarding tonight?
Wait and see.
Wait and see. Okay. Anything further?
What I would ask is, if I can move that up. Again, remember you have this tool on our website that you can go through and look at all of our capital projects. If you need a refresher on how to get there. We can just put it out there the next day or so with a link to this page. So you can all familiarize yourself with the projects again. And then if you have questions, we're certainly happy to answer them. So that when we do come together in two weeks, hopefully the budget has been signed. And we'll have a better idea on on if the ARPA funds are on there right now.
I do believe, just for clarification, that that the Department of Administrative Services is going to want a general idea before we can request our funding as to what we're going to do with that. We don't know. We're still waiting for official instructions, but if that is the case, then we'll wait for the work session, figure that out and then make the request of DAS at that point.
I'm kind of curious, just the ARPA funds, do they have to go to like specific? Like for infrastructure, for example, do they have to go to those or can they go to like a rebate for the citizens?
Not, you can't do anything as far as rebate for taxes. You could do some kind of basically, nothing could go straight to citizens, I guess. You could do some business recovery type stuff. Yeah, you could do some grant for businesses impacted by COVID-19. You can use it for for staff improvement in some fashion, or you can use it for infrastructure specifically related to water sewer and broadband.
Hey, Ray, could you answer, are we going to have the opportunity to go talk to the committee at state about more money from them for a wastewater plant or is that not going to be done?
I think that's another two years out.
Yeah, the next budget cycle is two years.
Yeah.
If any of budget, you're by that time where.
Where might should be done maybe.
Where some of the projects are.
Yeah.
Okay, but we can certainly hit them up for other.
Yeah.
Any further? If not, we'll go ahead and briefly, we'll adjourn to our work session and take a brief recess before the start of our city council.